I want to welcome folks back to our fifth interview that we're doing as a series of talking with staff members at the Margaret Chase Smith Policy Center in preparation for our main town meeting on June 1st. Where the director of the Policy Center Jonathan Rubin will be our guest, talking about the work the Policy Center does and to provide more depth, we wanted to talk with different staff members and hear about the projects they're working with. And so our fifth interview will be with Peggy McKee, who is a research associate at the Policy Center. Good afternoon, Peggy. How are you?
Fine, thank you. Good afternoon.
Well, thank you. Thank you for taking the time. How long have you been with the Policy Center?
Um, I have been working here a little more than 10 years.
Wow. So one of the striking things has been how young many of the staff members are and how recently they've come to work at this policy center. So you're one of the people who has more of a long-term perspective at Policy Center.
Yeah, I suppose that's true. Yep.
And what is your current portfolio of projects that you work on?
Well, I worked largely on student programs. So I manage a number of the student programs here. And I also do a bit of work on research projects that come up that are appropriate to some of my background skills.
And has your position evolved in the 10 years that you've been with the Policy Center?
It has. I started out also working on some of student programs, but as a sort of an assistant. And I was very much part-time and I sort of fluctuated part-time to full-time over those, over those years.
And what are some of the student projects that you oversee?
Um, the, there are three primary student programs that I work with. One is the Margaret Chase Smith Public Affairs Scholarship, which the Center administers here. And also you, you participate in, in some of that program with, from the library's side. And so that's a single student, sometimes two, but usually a single student scholarship for a school year. And another program that we run here is called the Maine Policy Scholars Program. And that is a program that is funded by the Maine Community Foundation. And we, we help to administer it and to run the program. And that involves one student from each of the seven Humane System campuses. And they work together on individual, individually chosen programs throughout the, the school year. And then the other program that I work with is the Maine Government Summer Internship Program.
Okay. Well, we'll start with the Public Affairs Scholarship since I do have some familiarity with that. And we've recently gone through the selection process. And this gives students a chance to pick their own project, to consider the public policy elements of it. And, and are there any, over the years that you've done it, are there projects that stand out to you?
Um, they, there's a real variety of projects that students have done. Part of the requirement is that they be relevant to Maine. So there's, there's also some perhaps repetition of, or similarity among some of the projects when you look back over time. But there was one project early on when I started here that where a student was using, he was a music student and he was using music to, do you recall that one?
I do. I was trying to remember his name because one of the, another feature of this program is that once they're selected, they're expected to come to the Margaret Chase Smith Library. So over the years, we weren't, we weren't always involved in the selection process, but we've always been involved in actually meeting the students. And I do remember him again. I'm still trying to fish in my mind for his, his, his name. And so what was the nature of his project?
Well, you know, I honestly can't, I mentioned him because I recall him, but I can't, I don't know the exact topic of his project. But what stood out to me was that his focus was music, yet he was applying that skill to policy in a way that was very creative. I mean, typically we get public, sorry, political science students are pretty common. But, but really the scholarship and the concept are applicable to students in any field. Because anybody can identify a, a public policy issue and, and address it from a, you know, any number of angles. One, one recent one that really stood out to me was the math student we had, I think, I think it was maybe two years ago, who was looking at a way to model the opioid epidemic in the state and, and using mathematics as a way to do research to inform policy on how to address that, that problem.
Well, that's the perfect opportunity to highlight that we've been doing these interviews since the pandemic started. And you're actually, I think, the 61st interview that we've done. And along the way, we've done some public affair scholars and the person you're referring to, his name is Cole Butler.
That's right.
And if people want to hear more about his project, they can go to our YouTube channel, The MCS Library, and find his interview, Cole Butler. And actually, when I was interviewing, he's gone on to graduate school, I believe at North Carolina State, or I think he's going to be working on his PhD, where he's continuing to pursue his interest in particular in epidemiology. And some other public affairs scholars who are, I have interviewed and you'd find on this YouTube channel, Abby Dupree, who did a project on student voting. And then some more recent ones, Thomas Adams, who was, I think, in teacher training. And his interest was civics, how civics can be, become more of the curriculum and we can do a better job of teaching civics in schools. And he was very committed to that. And then more recently, Ellie Pelletier, whose project is about, she wants to be a veterinarian. And so she was interested in addressing the shortage of veterinarians in the state of Maine, in particular in rural areas. So have, are the decisions official for this year?
Yes, we, we have made a decision for this year. We are funding, we are awarding two scholarships. One to, again, Ellie Pelletier, to continue to expand the work that she has started on the shortage of veterinarians in the state and how to address that problem. And the other student.
Michael, Michael Delorge.
Yes. His project. You probably.
One aspect of it is drug courts. He's interested in seeing if instituting drug courts would be a better way of trying to address the drug issues in the state of Maine.
Right.
So this is a dual project. So it's, it's somewhat still in conception in terms of what we saw, whereas Ellie is a year into it. So she was able to push it a little further in terms of actually getting to that policy stage.
Right. And it's also meant to be a learning process. So students do come into the scholarship program at different stages. You know, some have done background work on their topic that they've chosen and they, they really are ready to, to charge in and, and come up with a solution. And, and others just have identified something that they consider a problem or an obstacle or something. For example, there was a student further back a few years ago, who was looking at solid waste recycling on campus. So very localized, but yet still a, a policy issue. And, and so, so some start, you know, some start further into their topic than others. And, and they all progress towards identifying, you know, understanding the process of how do you address an issue? And how do you research an issue? And then coming up with a solution?
They are usually pretty committed to the project they have in mind. And then sort of your role is to push them into that idea of how you turn that idea and that passion into policy.
That's right. That's right. They are all, you know, they have their own background stories about why they are passionate about the topic that they've chosen. And they all work with their own academic advisor, who, who provides the structure in the background to, to get them to the, to the end result.
And so there are some stages along the way. They're expected to come to the Margaret Chase Smith Library. And I think they're, do a report like halfway through the year. And then towards the end of the year, they're expected to do a presentation or a poster about their project. And oftentimes, as you mentioned, it may be part of a larger project they're working on, like an honors thesis. All right. So that's the Public Affairs Scholarship. And that, from the student standpoint, there is scholarship money. It's just with their tuition. And so in case there's anyone out there listening and interested in applying or telling students who might be eligible, what are the eligibility requirements and when are the deadlines?
Yeah, that's, the, the applications are taken every year in the spring. The application this year was mid-April. I think it might shift a little for next year, maybe a little bit earlier. But it is usually the March-April timeframe. And the scholarship is a $3,500 award to the, to the student who, for their work. And yeah, the, the process has changed a little bit for, so for any student at Humane, the, the award comes to their attention through an online program called Scholarship Universe, which is the way the university has changed their notices about scholarships. So it should, it should in the future be made available, the information made available to a much wider audience.
Is any year eligible?
Oh, I'm sorry. Any year, no, they must have completed two years of college.
Very good. And then you talked about the Maine Policy Scholars Program. How does that differ from the Public Affairs Scholarship?
Well, the Maine Policy Scholars Program, in, in, in its sense, it is actually very similar in its goals. It's, it's a program that was established by the late Peter Cox, who was the editor of the Main Times newspaper. And he, it, it started just with a smaller group of students and it has since expanded to include each of the seven campuses, which chooses, each campus chooses one student and one faculty member who work together throughout the year. And it has very similar goals to the Public Affairs Scholarship in that the student comes into the program with an idea of a, a problem that they've identified in the state. And they want to find a solution to it. And so it, in the, in the course of the year, they learn about how to, how to accomplish research, how to do research, how to interview people. And they then how to look at solutions. And so the, the goal of the program is to teach students that good policy solutions require research, should be informed by research. And then by the end of the year, they do a similar presentation to a panel, a panel of policy practitioners and to their peer group. And they present a, they present their solution in the form of a memo to the governor. So it's really meant to be sort of emulating the legislative process in that the, it's, you know, they're not writing a 10-page paper and they're not doing an academic paper. They're really proposing a, a policy change. And the other thing that, oh, sorry, the other thing that's unique about this Policy Scholars Program is there's a focus on not only working with an academic advisor, but also identifying what we call a community mentor. Which is somebody who is a practitioner in whatever field the student's project is, is, is in, or is, is applicable to, who can provide some sort of like a real world perspective on what the student is proposing.
Do these seven students, do they work independently on their campuses? Apart from, it sounds like at the end, they do come together to share their work. But are there other opportunities for the seven plus their mentors and the community mentor to interact prior to that final session?
Yeah. And that's, that's a piece of the program that makes it a little bit special. We have, there are four established events or group meetings that they have throughout the year. So they, they start off the program with a weekend retreat of deep dive into their project and their peers. And the, you know, the, the whole process. And then that is meant to sort of create, create some relationships where they can keep, help each other, you know, support each other in their process throughout the year and learn from each other. And the faculty involved have different disciplines. And so they are often able to provide useful input and, and advice to other students who are not necessarily their own student. So it really does work as a, as a group. That's the goal.
So it sounds like there's a bit more structure to this program than the Public Affairs Scholarship where it's more independent.
Yeah, I would say that's accurate. Yep.
And are there any memorable projects that you can think of from the Policy Scholars Program?
Oh, gosh.
Interesting memos to governors?
Well, the one of the recent ones was a, a young woman from Farmington, who was looking at the, the issue of invasive green crabs. I don't know if you're familiar with.
Well, you know, I, I know very little about this program, but like the one project I know about is the Green Crab Program.
She actually got some pretty good publicity on her, on her project. But she was proposing ways to control the, the population of green crabs by creating a market for them, either a food, a food, culinary market, or some other incentive for people to harvest the green crabs and can get the population down. There are some other ones in the past, often some of the students at Fort Kent have been forestry students. And so they're looking at particular issues within forest management. There was a memorable student a couple of years ago, who was looking at the topic of limitations of housing for seniors in the state. And she, she took her project and her proposal to the legislature, was learned a lot in the process, testified before committee, or testified, presented before committee.
Have you had your culminating event this year?
No, we're actually just starting out. So we, the timeframe of that program has changed. It's, we're now back on sort of an academic year schedule. So the students have just been chosen on each campus and they're just starting to do some of their background work over the summer. And they will finish in the spring next year, in late April.
When will the retreat be?
That is right after the semester starts, so early September.
Okay. And does it rotate around where that occurs?
Yeah, no, it, we try to choose the most central place because everybody's got to travel. And so for some of the campuses, that, that's a, a big travel. So we tend to hold it in the Bangor, Orno area because that's pretty much central.
And your third program, the Maine State Government Internships, tell us more about that. What some of the internships are and how many students you support through it?
Um, yeah, the Maine Government Summer Internship Program was actually started back in the 1960s by some legislation that was meant to establish a sort of a, I guess you'd call it a pipeline of, you know, students who would be interested in working in state government. And at that time, it was just state government. And I believe the Margaret Chase Smith Policy Center started their role in administering the program more recently in the maybe 1980s or 90s. And now it includes municipal government. So we have, this year, for example, we have 52 internships, for which we select students, excuse me, place them in, in the summer internships, which are 12-week, full-time, paid internships. And most of them are in the Augusta area because the majority still are in state agencies. But we also have municipal internships and those can be, you know, dispersed around the state.
Were you able to fill all 52 internships this year?
We actually, we, 52 are the ones we filled. We started out with a few more that we were unable to fill. Yeah.
Is that a typical number?
It's on the high side, actually. I think our, our largest number of internships was 60. And that was a few years ago. It does tend to go up and down each year.
What are the eligibility requirements for students?
Those students need to have completed their first year of college, so entering, entering their second year. And they can be undergraduates or graduating, or even graduate students. We do place a number of grad students, usually law students as well.
Do they have to be going to a main school or is it, do they just have to be a main resident?
Yeah.
Or one or the other?
It, it's one or the other. They, they either are main residents, either going to school in-state or out-of-state, or they can be out-of-state students going to school in Maine. So it's, it's pretty, it's pretty broad.
And what are the timelines for any students who might be interested for next year?
The internship program takes applications starting in the beginning of February and the deadline is usually March 1st. And so one of the interesting things about the way we do this program is that we take requests from supervisors for an intern at the same time as we take applications from students. And then we have several committees who do a, a matching process to select the student, the student that fits the job best.
So are you saying that the students going into it don't necessarily know what the jobs are going to be?
Yes, that's exactly right. And that, that's a little twist to the program.
So they're applying for a specific job. They're just, they're applying for the internship.
That's right. They're applying to the program and they can look, and we encourage them to look at what some of the jobs have been in past years to get an idea of what they might be. But we can't really say exactly what jobs we have. And so that, that works two ways. It, for some students, it, you know, they, they want to know exactly what they're applying for because they're very focused. But the benefit of doing it that way is that many students don't know that much about what state agencies actually do. And so they, if they were, say, a communication student or a, you know, a computing student, they might not apply to a job in the Department of Labor. But the job description might actually fit their skills. And it opens up a whole world of learning about what government does that goes beyond the job description. So that, that's the benefit of doing it that way. It gets a little complicated sometimes.
And once this gets going in the summer, do you have supervisory responsibilities for it? Or at that point, is it just between the agency and the student?
We have a few responsibilities because one of the goals of the program is to also provide some educational, an educational component.
And what does that consist of?
That involves, historically, that has involved spending a whole, taking one day out of the summer and spending the whole day at the State House, learning about different roles and offices and how state government functions. And this year, and we are splitting that between the State House and learning about municipal government. So we're kind of trying to encompass the whole thing. And the, the other thing that we try to do with students is to encourage connections among the intern groups. So they learn from each other. So we have a couple of social events. We have a picnic. We, we try to provide opportunities for them to, to meet each other and, and learn from each other.
So we started doing these interviews during the course of the pandemic and invariably the discussion would turn to how the pandemic was affecting our work. How has the pandemic affected these programs, either for the better or for the worse?
Um, well, it has definitely made it difficult to provide some of what we just talked about, which is those connections.
You probably didn't have too many picnic in 2020.
No. And in fact, all our programming was, was on Zoom. But it actually allowed us to do something a little bit different, which was find people across the state who would speak to groups of interns on Zoom about their particular branch of, of government, whether it was a municipality or a community organization, or a county, or, or state agency. So it allowed us to give a little bit more variety of programming to the students, even though it was remote.
Well, I want to thank you for sharing these different student projects that you're working on. And you talked at one, one point how the state had created the, the government internships, this idea of creating a pipeline of people who will become interested in public policy. And it's sort of trite to say, but obviously these young people are, will be our future policymakers. So thank you for the work you do, teaching them and introducing them in many ways to what public policy is. And you, you mentioned that you also work on public policy projects yourself. Are there any that you want to mention or highlight before we move on and wrap up?
I'm sorry, that was an echo. The, a couple of projects that I have worked on that I've truly enjoyed were some of the reports that the Policy Center has put out over the past years, a number of years ago, we, we put out a report called Poverty in Maine, which was a, a broad survey of many different measurements of the, the state. And I, I helped with that report.
Would that have been like very early on in your career? Because I think I do remember that. It seems like it was like maybe about 10 years ago.
Yeah, there was, I want to say 2015 may have been the last time I was involved in that. That was when Anne Atchison was, was with the Policy Center for a long time. And most recently, I, I was participating in a report we just put out on road salt in Maine. And that was, that was especially fun to work on.
And that's got some attention in the news. I've seen at least two television news reports about it and other coverage in newspapers as well.
Well, it's, it's pretty relevant because we all use roads. Well, it's, it's pretty relevant because we all use road salt and it affects us all. And yeah, it's, it's a topic everybody can identify with.
Very good. Well, thank you very much for sharing about the work that you do at the Policy Center. And again, just to remind people that we're doing these interviews as a lead-up to our main town meeting on June first, where the speaker will be the Director of the Policy Center, Jonathan Rubin. And we hope people will be able to join us for that, either in person or via Zoom. I will put the link to the registration as part of this post on Facebook and then also be on our YouTube channel, the MCS Library. And our Facebook is just the Margaret Chase Smith Library. Thank you very much, Peggy.
My pleasure. Thank you. Nice to talk with you.
Thanks. Bye-bye.